Okay. Welcome, everyone. Thanks, Council for attending. Public for listening and coming here and listening to the briefing and the presentation. Thank you for participating. We'll have another budget. This is mostly operating and then Capitol B Saturday. Just some general rules. Please, Public, this is a listening session for you. This is a council staff discussion. For Council, I'll ask if you have questions. It's divided by section. So Ms. Mallory Merritt will go through a section. She will then, at the end, ask for questions. Kind of raise your hand. I'll try and, one, two, three, I'll try and keep in my head, one, two, three, four, five, or whatever. Quite frankly, it's a dialogue when y'all attend, okay? But just hold it till each section, write down your notes, and then we'll dialogue again. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it. And if there's no other things right off the bat, there's some water for you. Enjoy. If we go a little long, I'll kind of just eyeball you guys and see if we need to take a break, or if you think we need to take a break. Otherwise, Ms. Merritt, please.
All right. Thank you. Our team is excited to present the 24 operating budget today. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into any budget development process that for staff begins in July. So July is always an interesting month for our city team as we're closing out one fiscal year, starting another one, and then beginning the planning for the future year. So I want to thank a small list of staff, in particular, for their work on this process. Hannah and Matthew served as the lead analyst throughout the development process, and they're both new to their positions and have done a great job in getting the materials ready for you today. Courtney and all of her work on the community survey process. This was a community survey year for us, which also involves quite a bit of work there. So she'll be presenting that to you. Basha and her entire team in accounting. Nothing that we do would be possible without the bookkeeping and the recordkeeping that they go through to keep us out of trouble. And then Clay and the capital team for all of their work in building out the capital budget. And then, lastly, the entire management team that's here today. Again, it takes all of us to get this ready to present to you. So we're happy to do that this afternoon.
And can I say, the way you've organized this this year, really helpful.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So our agenda for today, we're just planning to do a brief refresher on fund accounting. It should be kind of a repeat for most of you. Present the 22 community survey highlights and findings. The 23 financial updates, so just where we are through last November. Cory will present a preview of the 23 proposed work plan. And then we'll go through our financial policies, dive into the 24 budget, and then end with just a brief schedule and what we have slated for Saturday. So again, the budget process, it shows on here that it formally begins in September, but it really begins in July with the salary projection, and we begin revenue projections. This brings us to kind of where we are right now, which is mid-January. We're about halfway through the formal development process. The next item that you will see before you will be the maximum property tax resolution public hearing, which will be the first cycle in February. And that's already been set and was published in the paper yesterday. And then your packets. You have quite a bit of materials in front of you. There is an overview memo that is written by our team that summarizes the budget. So if you don't look at anything else, I would draw you to that for sure. Some budget summary reports that just look at a high level by fund. The department business plans and the detail pages that show overall staffing, and then all of the CIP content. And then you have at your table copies of the presentation and then also full copies of the community survey report from ETC. So with that, we will jump right in. If you're familiar with private sector accounting, governmental accounting is a little bit different. For us, we go by fund accounting. So for a city, we're very, very concerned with making sure that the different sources of money that we get, they typically have special requirements and can only be used for certain things. So we keep them separated into funds, just so that we can monitor their uses. Our number of funds can fluctuate from year to year. Right now, we have 112 funds, so quite a bit of different funds to keep up with there. And they're broken down into four major categories. So we have our governmental, special revenue, our enterprise, our proprietary, and then our internal service funds. So as we move through the presentation today, when you hear our team talk about governmental funds, these are probably the funds that generally come to mind. So your general fund, hotel motel fund, trust and agency, special library fund. A special revenue funds are those funds that have very special uses, as the name implies. So road use tax and local option sales tax would be examples there. And then our internal service funds, these are unique in that they only get their money from all of the other funds. That's their only revenue source that they have. There is no external revenue that's coming into those. So three of the major ones there would be risk, employee insurance, and IT. And then, lastly, our enterprise funds, which are our business-like units that we have. So primarily sewer funds, solid waste, clean water, river's edge, those types. And with that, our first formal block is complete. We'll move into the community survey if there are no questions on me to that. All right. I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Thank you. Okay. So as Mallory mentioned before you, you have the full report of the community survey. And today, I'll just be giving you a brief overview of the results that we have. So for the last several years, the city has partnered with the ETC Institute. This year, we mailed out 5,000 randomly selected survey, or randomly selected residents, the survey. And of those, 5,835 completed the survey, which therefore makes our survey a true random sample with a confidence interval of 95%. So what this really means is that we are confident that 95% of the data contains the true meaning of the population. So if you look up at the screen here, you're going to see that our citizens' top four responses, the top priorities of the city include quality of city streets, quality of neighborhoods, quality of flea services, and city's effort to attract and retain businesses. Next, you're going to see the major services recommended for increased investment. And this is actually a combination of high priority ranking and low satisfaction ranking. So from that, you can see the overall quality of city streets, the overall quality of neighborhoods, and the city's effort to attract and retain businesses. The city's overall performance, residents rated highest based upon a combination of very good and good fall under this category. And so the city as a place to work, the city as a place to live, the overall quality of services provided by the city, and the city as a welcoming and inclusive community. Next, you're going to see the community's top priorities. And this really is the community's focus areas that the residents felt should be the city's top priority. So this includes public safety, city infrastructure, and retaining and attracting jobs. Our major categories of city services that were rated highest are really a combination of two things. They are a combination of very good and good responses. So as you can see from the chart here, you're going to see that some of those that were rated highest were quality of fire and paramedic services, quality of library services, quality of garbage and recycling collection, and then the quality of our city parks, recreation programs, and our facilities. If you look to this slide on this graph, this is really the composite satisfaction index of all city services when we measure up against the U.S. average. And so since 2010, you can actually see that the city of Davenport has consistently and continuously exceeded the U.S. average in satisfaction ratings. Given that we had a pandemic, you're going to notice that the national average began to decline. So if you look at that 2020 to 2022 range, you're going to see that. But please keep in mind that while satisfaction ratings have declined, the city has continued to maintain its 11-point difference despite the pandemic. So how are we doing nationally? Compared to other communities nationally, Davenport rated above the U.S. average in 25 of the 40 areas that were assessed, and Davenport rated significantly higher than the U.S. average in 23 service areas. So some of these service areas that we just want to give a shout out to are fire responsiveness to emergency calls for services, police responsiveness to emergency call for service, library services, bulky waste collection service, quality of walking and biking trails, and Davenport as a place to live. How are we doing regionally? Davenport rated above the plan's regional average in 30 of 40 areas assessed. And specifically, we actually rated significantly higher than the plan's regional average in 24 service areas. Some of these service areas include fire and paramedic services, police services, garbage and recycling collection services, city parks, recreation programs, and facilities, customer experience and city interactions, and Davenport as a place to visit. This next slide is really one that I think we're all particularly proud of, given that the city of Davenport is a service-based industry. 91% of those surveyed believe that the city of Davenport, and specifically, city employees who help them, were friendly and polite. 84% of those believe that they were knowledgeable and capable, and 80% believe that they responded promptly. And as you can see over at the next chart, the city's been able to maintain or exceed their customer service standards since 2008. And I can speak with true intention that this is, customer service is something that we are always improving, and this goes to show that our citizens consistently feel that this is something that we care about.
All right. Any questions on community survey?
Yeah. So with this last slide, you know, talking about trends, looking at how we kind of compared against ourselves in '22, '20, and '08, how do we, how does our citizens' perception of these overall performance, the four rated the highest, compare to those years as well? So, I mean, I look at the city as a welcoming and inclusive community. 55% said good and very good. So we got almost half of our citizens that do not feel we are a welcoming, inclusive community. That's kind of concerning, again, its perception. How do we compare? Also, you know, city is a place to live, 63%. I don't know. I think I'd like to set the bar a little bit higher there. So I'm just curious if we have those numbers, if we can get those to compare those rating scales from the last few surveys.
Yep, we could get you that.
Perfect. Thank you.
I don't know if this survey had it, but a lot of city surveys, you go through and answer the questions, and then at the end, it asks you very specific information about yourself, like your address rather than your zip code or something. And I know people that get to that far and go, oh, not providing that. Is there any way that we can take that kind of information out of the survey while still getting good demographics?
I would want to ask ETC about that. They've administered our survey for a number of years on best practices, but that's something we could certainly ask them on if they're seeing changes like that and if they have any recommendations for us for the future.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything that doesn't key in on who am I, you know, I think would be helpful.
Anybody else?
All right. We're going to move into the 23 update. You should have received already the financial update through November. We always have a lag just because it takes over a month to close out a prior month. So you'll be receiving the updated monthly financial update through December, probably within the next week or two. Just so you know, all the data that's here that we're getting ready to cover is accurate as of the end of November. So general fund departments, that's something that we monitor very, very closely. We're currently at 39.2%, but we have 41.7% of the year completed. So everything is trending along really, really well there. I would draw your attention to just a few of the departments. The city council always appears a little bit higher this time of year. Many of the payments that are funded out of the city council department are front-loaded, so it's a little front-heavy. It usually starts to rebalance around month six or seven. So you'll start to see that equalize here soon. The finance department is also a little bit higher than normal. We transitioned the risk division to human resources about a month or so ago. There's a lot of great opportunities from doing that, but this is kind of overinflating finance because some of the earlier in the year costs associated with our premiums are still sitting in finance, but it's since been moved. And then, lastly, public works is appearing just a little bit high. The city council did approve an updated lease agreement with Annie Witt and Family Resources later in the year in '22. So that is a budget amendment for '23. So those costs are reflected in the year-to-date but not reflected in the budget. So this is all original budget information. So payroll costs, this is an area that we also monitor extremely closely. If you are off by 1%, you have completely missed the mark on that. So we always want to make sure that we're really, really closely within kind of what the target is there. Happy to report to you that we're right in line with where we expected, actually just slightly below, which is where you want that to be. You always want a little bit of a margin there. Trust and agency, that's important for us to monitor because trust and agency is providing the benefits to general fund personnel, so particularly police and fire and our MFRSI contribution. Same story there. We're currently at 38.3%, which is slightly below the expected level of 39.5%. So again, about a 1% margin to the good on that.
And you're doing this based on the fiscal year ending in July?
Correct. Or in June 30.
June 30, yeah.
Our health costs for the council that has been around for a while, you know that we have seen different versions of this story over the years. Right now, things are trending along really, really well. The original budget for this fund is $15.5 million. Our current year-end projection, where we're averaging a little over $1 million a month there, is roughly $13 million, so about $2.5 million to the good there. That's one that we'll continue to monitor. If we continue to have this experience within this fund, you would likely see us change kind of the structure of the revenue for it for FY '25 because it is an internal service fund. So again, claims are 14.3% lower than they were last year. Not something we were necessarily expecting but are happy to see. But most importantly, I think the biggest so what from this slide is the sub-bullet there, that we currently don't have any claims that are hitting our stop-loss level of 190,000. So we acquire a secondary policy that protects us from high-level claims because those can really cause a problem for your group experience. So, yeah, we don't have any claims hitting the 190 right now, which is great. Any questions on current year? All right. So as we look ahead to FY '24, we're in the second year, or entering the second year of a two-year budget cycle, which really means that we're carrying forward the goals that we created for FY '23. So you're not going to see any drastic swing in our budgeting philosophy or our financial policies. This really is meant to just carry forward the good work that's been done for FY 2023. So the main points, this is the exact same budget message as we shared with you for '23, are really focused on stability, flexibility, and I would say capacity. That's one thing that you will hear us weave in over the next several slides, is that we're reaching this pivot point where we're starting to be able to use funds that have built up capacity to draw down kind of these long-term debt burdens that we have acquired. So that's really the positive budget message that's before you, is that we're stable, we're planning for unknowns, we've built in plenty of capacity there, and we have flexibility to deal with the things that find their way to us.
What are some of the debt burdens that we're focusing on that we're doing?
So they come from many, many years ago. They come from, many of them come from a decade ago, before we had engaged PFM at the level that we currently are. Now, John Burmeister works with us on a monthly basis instead of just being engaged at the bond sale. So he is constantly reviewing our debt service obligations to make sure that we're in alignment there. So we have this opportunity moving forward to start using some different funds to resource our capital needs rather than selling large amounts of debt, whereas before, we only had one option, which was to sell debt.
I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Bond ratings, we have not had the opportunity this year yet to visit with our rating agencies, but that is forthcoming. Exciting that they will be actually onsite in Davenport. They have committed to come and visit with us and see our community, and especially all of the great work that's gone on in the economic development area. So they will be here late February, and we look forward to an update. But again, I don't anticipate their message to change. It's been very consistent over the last several years. And they have been, I think, quick to offer positive comments towards the work and the policies that have been put in place by the council. So that brings us to our budget highlights. I have them listed here for you as highlights, but we really, our team thinks of these as budget development goals. So the first goal obviously drives everything that we do, and it's to make sure that every single item that's included in your packet somehow aligns to an operational pillar, a council goal, or the city administrator's work plan. And happy to tell you that this budget certainly accomplishes that. The second one is to make sure that it complies with all of the policies and the directives that you, as the council body, have given us. This budget certainly carries on the spirit of that, which we'll get into in the 22 review section. And then, lastly, we know that we want to maintain that current tax levy rate of 1678 and then also maintain or exceed our current service level. So this budget also does that, and we'll work through that over the next several slides. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cory to go through goal one.
So consistent with our work with previous councils, we have partnered with you on goal-setting that really focuses on a two-year cycle. The operational pillars have been with our leadership team and previous councils for, we're going on seven years now, and we fundamentally believe that everything we do should tie back to one of those six things. And if it doesn't, we should be asking why. And so that's been very effective for us. As you will remember, when you goal-set last year, there were really three very specific things. There were a lot of carryover initiatives that remain, and we'll talk a little bit about some of those, but ARPA being the biggest of those, the Canadian Pacific Rail merger, which should be coming to its conclusion here in the next month or two, and then the continued pursuit of federal stimulus funds, which I cannot credit Clay and Teggen enough for the work that they have been doing in that arena. Consistent with what Courtney had shared from the community survey, neighborhood-level infrastructure, you all know how important that is to our residents, and, lastly, public safety, equally important. So those were the really big things that the council said please focus on over the next two years. And so I will highlight a couple of those. You will remember, we built this last fall to really talk strategically about how we move forward through some things. And so this is kind of the pretty version of our chart to make sure that our leadership team is both tracking and has capacity to continue accomplishing what we've said we would and planning for the future. So Fire Station 3, if you have the privilege of going up Brady, it's been quite a fun fall and winter to watch it take place. But Chief Carlson and his team will have the grand responsibility of turning it into an operational asset later this year, which is the first time in a long time that we've done that since Central Fire. But such a great attribute for our community and the ability for fire to continue providing service to especially that part of town as we grow in that area. Public safety, the amount of work the entire team, both Chief Bladel and his whole command staff, all the way through to their bargaining units, and our civilian staff here in City Hall, work to ensure that we continue to retain and attract the best that we possibly can to serve our community. Just recently swearing in some of the new professionals, but this will continue to be a very strategic focus area for the entire team. GBI, and I know this is one of the mayor's favorite, but this started as a concept and has turned into us being a subject matter expert in our nation on this topic. And so to Sarah and Chief Bladel and the mayor, who've spent just countless hours taking this from a concept to something we've learned how others done and made it our own with community partnerships and success. And I think the Community Foundation's announcement last week really illustrates just how exceptional we took an idea into actual execution in a very, very short period of time with the help of our community. But now we will begin to really operationalize this into the community and make sure that we have that buy-in because the sustainability of this initiative is the most important part. We've made great strides over the last year, but we need to make sure that the sustainability of the program lives on. 21st century policing. So for many years in the work plan, we've talked about crime analytics and this and that, and it's really now this evolving into what law enforcement and 21st century policing will mean for us and how we will use data to drive decision-making, how we will make smart investments in our community, and we will align our human capital with our technical capital to make sure that we have the right people focusing on the right goals and serving our community. And so kudos to the entire Police Command staff on the work they're doing to bring these concepts into fruition in our community.
One thing that I'm really excited about from the beginning was the crime analytics unit, and that was funded by grants. What's our sustainability of that?
So the chief and Mallory and I are working on the civilian strategy in its entirety because it's not just analytics. There are lots of other pieces within PD that, striking the right balance between sworn officers doing what needs to be done on the street and civilians doing, again, exactly that 21st century policing. So that is something we are actively working on. What is the long-term strategy for that?
I'm happy to hear that you're expanding the civilian aspect, too. I think we have to.
It's how it will be done in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
We talked about neighborhood-level infrastructure and big infrastructure, but, you know, I think when Mallory updated the sewer, no-fault sewer program this year, and I think that gets highlighted, there are some really innovative things that we've had the opportunity to do. And if you've driven 53rd in the past couple months, it's nice and smooth, and the next phase will be great. But there have been investments all over the city. Public Works continues to do a really fantastic job caring for infrastructure. Water Pollution Control Plant, flood mitigation, this has been on the, I think, the dream list probably for a really long time, but on the to-do list. And so you will start to see through grants and active projects within Public Works, us continuing to protect what is a very significant regional asset for our community.
And this may be out of place because I'm having trouble connecting what was in here with what's here. But one of the things that's said in here, that there's no expectation of increases with development, the wastewater treatment plant, the same amount of wastewater should be coming in, but we're going to have more development in the city. Is that a reasonable assumption?
So this project specifically is flood mitigation.
Oh, I know. I know. That's why I'm saying, I'm not sure if this is the right place.
Right. So the short answer is that will come, I think, on a future slide.
Okay.
If I remember right.
Okay.
And if it isn't in one of the pictures, I have the answer, but I want to make sure we get to the right one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So CP, we've talked about that, both at Water Pollution Control but also the Quiet Zone, which we've also submitted an FRA grant for. I had the opportunity to catch up with CP personnel last week, and it still looks like early February is consistent with what we're hearing from our consulting team, is when the final EIS will be issued. So Duck Creek Sewer, so again, this is how we are meeting our DNR consent decree obligations. And so we've been talking about how we And so we've been talking about how we kind of mark what will probably look like a very unceremonious ribbon cutting or groundbreaking, whatever it will be, but it will be very important for our community and also continue to build on our relationship with the DNR and making sure we're complying with all the things in our consent decree.
I just want to add, a lot of things we do, you guys are smart enough to know, but just aren't real, I don't know how to say it differently, sexy, right? But they're important and the things we put into the infrastructure sustainability, especially under the ground, is humongous. And we, I thank the council for that, I thank the staff for that because these are very important and they lead to other things. So just know that the investment in infrastructure, whether it's above-ground streets, which we all care about in the infrastructure, and we'll hear more about that Saturday, so I'll speak more Saturday, but the underground and all that is vitally important. And again, thanks to the council and the staff for taking it serious and thanks for the citizens that tell us that's what we need to do. Thank you.
So Dream has grown into Dream Plus and will soon be growing into Extreme Dream. For the council who's been here for several years, you will remember all of us wrestling with this concept of urban revitalization and what does that exactly mean? And I think we wrestled for about two years trying to figure out what that meant. But kudos to the council for having a vision many years ago and to Bruce and his team. And I know Mallory and Courtney have assisted along with Rich on this. But growing this into the city's true and now demonstrated commitment to our urban core neighborhoods. I know Bruce and his team get to see the happy side of the families who are having their dreams come true all the time. But for those of you who are in these neighborhoods where that reinvestment's happening, it is incredibly meaningful and I think future councils will look back at this specific book of programs with great gratitude. So Fairmont Community Center, which is tied to the ARPA project slate, but that will, I think we got final design back and that will break ground this year. And I know the community and that general area is very excited to have that asset in the west side of our community. ARPA Parks. My communications team has had a blast testing some of these out as they've been installed and the next phase of them will come later this year. But again, the fact that we were able to partner with Davenport Community Schools and let the children, the actual users of these assets be the ones who help pick them, I think was a really, really great moment, both for the kids and our staff. And now watching the community start to take advantage, Mother Nature has been very, very helpful the past couple of weeks. But to take advantage of the new playgrounds already in, I think the neighborhoods are very grateful for the city's commitment, the council's commitment to reinvesting where they maybe haven't seen them at this level for a long time.
I just want to say the last couple, this last week, got more calls on that. Thanks for the parks, thanks for that than I've gotten in a lot of groups. It's drawing attention in a good way. Thank you.
I would say on that one, I've challenged Courtney and Sarah and the communications team to really do something spectacular around this. This is something those kids will remember for the rest of their lives with this many parks and this much of the community and to make sure we're really proud and we allow our community to be really proud of this moment in time for those neighborhoods. So this one has evolved a lot and will probably continue to, but what started out with Main Street Landing and grew into the conversations with CP and ultimately resulted in a successful partnership with the FIGI and IEDA. This will take up significant resources from our leadership team and Public Works and Parks this summer, but we are very much looking forward to the community engagement and starting to turn these pretty pictures into things that will come to life for holidays and summers to come.
I'll say, feedback from the state, Davenport does things big and they do it well. That's what they told me. So thanks to y'all for doing it. Ms. Lee?
And is this going to be the redesign with some tweaks? Or are we going to have some different themes to ultimately select? We, meaning the city.
So we need to schedule our next meeting with Sasaki. That was a Clay and I post-holidays project, but he has to get through the CIP budget with you all on Saturday first. So probably a little bit of both. I think there's some design intents there. Is it going to look exactly like that? I don't think anything ever looks exactly like the picture as it's submitted, but it will be a generative process through the course of this summer.
Okay, because we had talked about three different themes for this city to select from.
That was part of the original contract. Now that IEDA is part of the partnership, I think it gets more complex than that. As with anything significant, there will be no shortage of community engagement opportunities. So and this is where we shift gears a little bit into the future. And you'll remember, we did submit a grant for kind of some reinvestment at the River Center and had some conceptual work done. Unfortunately, the EDA, we didn't make it to the top of their list, but Teggen and Clay and others will continue to try. I'm sure there's many more programs that we can look at. But regardless, we need to have a plan. We need to go out of having a vision. If you've been in the River Center, if you've been in the Adler, they are great assets for our community, but without significant reinvestment, I don't know how much longer I can say that. So we need to be very thoughtful about making sure that this venue has an important part of our future as it has in our past.
So does River Center Master also mean River Center slash Adler? Okay.
They're one unit.
Yeah.
In the budget and otherwise. Yeah.
If you make any investment in the Adler, please put in new seats.
Absolutely.
I mean, really.
We've all been there.
Yes.
Myself included. And the bathrooms. We often have conversations about the bathrooms. Alder Woman Lee, I think this gets back to, nope, you can go to the next one, where we had started. So there are, this year for the staff team is really about executing the things we've made commitments to and we will be able to check off many of them and get many of them underway. But we are also at what I would call an inflection point of there are some big things that we can no longer say that's a tomorrow problem. And we're there on several of them. River's Edge with Batplex doing what it's done and that's a great asset for our region, but that creates a reflection point for us to decide what is the best use of our facility for our community's future. And we're to the point where we need to be thoughtful about that and that's great. It's a great conversation we should have. There are opportunities, there are partnerships, but we need to be thoughtful about that. We can't just say that's a 2026 problem. It's a 2024 problem. North Park Mall, Alderman Grip, I will go back to you and I talking when you first got elected that this was on the five-year plan and don't you know, it's year five. So in the view of the mall, and I would say, and you all know this, the pandemic accelerated what was already happening in retail. If you've watched the news at all lately, a lot of what used to be the prized possession retailers are closing store after store around the country. And so the mall will be something different and that's okay. That's not something to be scared of. It's something that we have the opportunity to be thoughtful of. Our partners at Mesa should have already reached out. They know we are intending to do a market study and I want to be very clear. A market study is the backbone of the business strategy. This isn't pretty pictures. This isn't a dream of what we aspire to. This is, we are a Midwestern market with certain market fundamentals and we need to have the right spine to build off of. And so that's very much what this is. There will be no pretty picture at the end of this particular part of the project. It will be very focused on business fundamentals and what our opportunities are and what our likely outcomes are. Annie Witt, you all got to see pictures of us experiencing some water main breaks ourselves over the past month, but it's a very complex, it's literally a complex, but it's a very complex facility too. There are some buildings that are historic. There are some pieces of history that are cherished and need to be respected. And there's also some business consequences to us continuing to do nothing there. And so much like the River Center, we need to decide what we want its future to be and then what's planned to get there. And then lastly, to Alder Woman Lee's earlier point, the Water Pollution Control Plant. So this, the same thing. We have done a phenomenal job, Nicole and her team have done a phenomenal job with our 2080 partners on working with the DNR and getting us through the consent decree and making the improvements we had to make. This next stage is the long-term reinvestment, the long-term maintenance. And while there's no plans currently to expand it per se, we can be smarter about how we do wastewater, which we have been specifically with some of our manufacturing projects, that pretreatment onsite is a way to gain capacity. When you take the higher potency users out of the system through pretreatment, that actually gets you more capacity on the other side. But we need, it's a very expensive, it's a highly regulated facility and we need to spend a lot of time working through what our next 20 years look like, both financially and from the physical plan standpoint.
So I guess my question is, are we making sure that we have, with everything we're doing, which is really, really good, with the growth we're expecting, we've still got plenty of capacity, right?
I think it's more complicated than that because we are one of four entities. And residential growth is easier than industrial growth. And so it's about being strategic about what you do in certain parts of the growth area. We're going to need more distribution lines at some point. It's a very complex system, so it's not an easy yes or no answer, for sure.
But and the good thing is the pretreatment that you're requiring for a lot of these industries. That's really good. Thank you.
So that's what we have planned for fun this year and I'm sure you'll send us a curve baller too along the way too.
I just want to say thank you for including North Park and Annie Witt. I mean, it's really talking about long-term risk mitigation is what it is. And if you look at risk to revenue, North Park is a huge risk we have to lower revenue for our budget. And then Annie Witt is obviously a risk for our capital budget. We deferred maintenance on that long enough and at some point you either have to pay for the maintenance or unfortunately lose the buildings. We don't want to lose those buildings, so we need to find a suitable course of action to save Annie Wittmeyer, but also protect our finances as well.
And because I haven't looked through this yet to see how it does here, is this the appropriate time to ask about Riverfront Improvement Commission staffing or will that come up later?
I don't know exactly what the question is. The FTE remains.
Does it?
Yeah. We will likely recalibrate it to meet the needs of both the commission and the city in the future, but there's no change to the FTE.
Okay, and are we planning to hire soon?
We're going to work with the chairman of the Riverfront Improvement Commission. We have a business plan concept that we'd like to meet with her on and that we will execute after we've had that opportunity.
Okay, that's good to know.
All right. Budget Development Goal Two is really focused on making sure that the recommended budget carries forward their reserve and liquidity targets and meets all of the financial policies that have been set in place by the city council. Most of the next several slides are connected to FY '22 year-end. You obviously had a more comprehensive presentation on the audit here several weeks back. So most of this information that's here is information only and needs to be included as part of the official '24 budget record. But I will hit on just a couple of things. Reminder that our general fund reserve policy is 17 to 25%. We remain at the 25% level and don't anticipate any changes with that in the next year or two. Our unrestricted cash is another kind of major indicator that our rating agencies look at and that we look at as staff, just to see how we're doing. That again is at 187.5 million, which is nearly a 30% increase over the prior year. And then our negative cash funds, we continue to only have the one, which is IP, which I had shared with you several weeks back. We are going to evaluate that this year. There is a discussion about whether we would be allowed to overallocate that particular fund to stay out of this negative cash situation, but we need to discuss that a little more in-depth with our auditors since it is an internal service fund, it has a little bit more restrictions on it, so we just want to check into that. But that may be a recommendation that you see come forward in a future budget cycle.
That entirely? No dressing?
Kind of. It's due to prepaid, so it's not necessarily really in a negative cash status. It just appears that way because of prepaid software and we have to move software costs into the year that they actually belong. So we would do kind of a temporary one-year overallocation to build in enough buffer to keep it out of this negative cash appearance.
Just to look better for the auditor?
Correct.
The county is so weird.
It is.
Thanks.
So you can't depreciate software over the life of the software?
Fasha says no.
Okay. Which is what a business would be able to do over the life, whatever its life was, but you can't do that.
He is giving me the no.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, one year at a time, she says.
Got it. Which is strange.
All right. Our liquidity policies, they're broken down into two different policies. One for governmental type funds and then the following page are our business type units. The so what of the governmental is really the chart on the right, which is our investments. We want those to be at least 50% of our liabilities. Obviously with the goal being 50%, we're at 162% of that goal. And then on the business funds, the goal there is only 15% and we're at 246%. I would remind the council that many of these policies were put in place many, many years ago. It is my intent to reengage PFM on this particular topic during this calendar year to evaluate our goals and make sure that they're still adequate for the size of our community and for the growth of our funds. Many of these funds have grown significantly since the time that these policies were put in place, so it would just be a good time for a refresher on our financial policies and that's something I think they would do a great job at. The 22 review slides, there are two of those back-to-back. Again, you have seen this chart before. The important thing is again, the '23 budget is tracking along kind of with this same spirit and then the '24 budget was built to have some modest surpluses just to keep us in a positive position there. Trust and Agency Reserves. This is a fund that we, obviously as I mentioned earlier, we pay really close attention to. Again, this is the fund that's used to fund benefits for general fund personnel. One of the largest portions of this is insurance and then also the required contributions to the municipal fire and police system, so pensions for police and fire personnel. Our goal is 25%. We're still a little bit off of that and although the chart makes it look like we still have a ways to go, it's about $1.5 million in between there. We've been able to make some progress really over about the last two years, which is attributed to lower contribution rates for MFRSI. We're watching that closely. That stayed down for '23 and for '24 for the FY '24 budget, but their recent actuarial report does show that potentially starting to climb again for FY '25 and beyond. So we'll keep watching that overall. We're not quite at our goal, but these are still very adequate reserves. Employee Health Fund. We covered this already earlier, but this is just kind of putting it into a different display. So our goal here is 25%. We are significantly exceeding that goal. However, I still find this to be an adequate level of reserves because this represents about $12 million, which is still slightly less than one full year of claims for us. So when you think about the potential volatility within a self-insured insurance fund, these are reserves that we want to have on hand just because we don't have a ton of control over when someone gets sick, how many people get sick or for how long. So again, this fund has really, really rebounded over the last several years and we're happy with its performance. All right, any questions on '22? Okay, we'll go into the good stuff. So FY '24, our budget here, this chart may look a little bit different than what you're used to, so I wanted to... Okay, I can talk to you about the goal here, sorry. Goal three is to maintain our current tax levy rate of 1678 per $1,000 of taxable value and to maintain or... and to maintain or exceed our current service level. That's important to us, that we're not increasing our tax rate or decreasing your service. Mayor?
I just want to say, have everybody heard that? Okay. Because people always ask, is you raising our taxes? For another year after many years, we're saying the same thing, in case anybody wasn't paying attention in, you know, somewhere.
It's the assessment.
It's the assessment.
How many years have we been at that rate?
I'll have to double-check. Many.
Many years at the rate. That's the key.
We understand this.
Well, we need to revisit that with the state income tax change, do you think?
I don't believe so. All right. So our '24 budget overview, again, this looks just a little bit different than perhaps what you are used to. So I did just want to address a couple of things here. The operating budget is up 4.2%, which is, that's the one that, again, is a little bit higher, again, than what would be typical for us. But there are some very specific reasons for that. This includes year one of the proposed tentative agreements for police and fire. So they're collective bargaining agreements. Those wages right now, both of those agreements are public, are over 3.5%. The GWI is 3.5%, but when you look at the entire roll-up, it was certainly more than that. Some of the ARPA positions, which the council adopted as part of the spending plan, were not put into the actual adopted budget for '23. So some of those that were not included have now been included. So that's changing things a little bit there. There's a proposed increase in the solid waste fund, which we will cover on a future slide. And then we've obviously started working to address the equipment needs at the water pollution control plant. So Nicole and her team, we've been working very closely on how can we start to incrementally grow that? So this does include over $500,000 of additional equipment replacement money within the water pollution control plant. But again, some of that is allocated back to the other cities. But it's all reflected here. And then I would add that although the operating budget is looking a little bit high, there are offsetting revenues on the other side that are equally as inflated. So the net is about the same there. It's just we have more costs loaded in than normal. Our capital budget is up 8.7%. This can fluctuate from year to year based on grants. And then debt is another area that can fluctuate for us just based on what prior councils and finance directors have bonded. So right now, our obligations are down. And this is a number that, again, PFM works very closely with us on what we need to pay and when. So total budget up 2.7% overall. Any questions on any of that? Again, I know that was just a little bit different. All right. Property taxes, this is another area that's a little bit different this year. Again, so I have an extra slide in between that hopefully will help us all work through this. So the residential rate did go up by about 2%. The commercial rate is still at 90%. There's an asterisk next to 24 because there is one caveat there related to the business property tax credit. And then the multi-res, that category was actually eliminated for FY '24, which is why it is highlighted in red. It did, any property that was previously in that category is now taxed at the residential rate, which is why we just put that there kind of for illustration purposes only. But that category no longer exists. When you look at our 100% valuations by class, so this is our full assessed value of all the properties in our city. I would start with the good news in the top right corner. Our overall growth is up by 2.3%. Typically, we want to see this over 2%. When that happens, your experience on the taxable side will usually put you over 2%, which is what our target as a city is, that we need typically to make our budget float. So that's the good news right off the bat. Down at the bottom, you'll see the multi-res down by 100%. But then you're going to see the large increase in the residential of 7.36%. That is because all of those properties, again, have been moved up and are now reflected in the red or orange line. And then just some modest growth in commercial at 0.66%. Again, keep in mind that for a commercial property to have been reflected in this valuation chart, the construction would have to have been completed by the end of '21. So we've obviously had a lot of great commercial growth over the last 13, 14 months. None of that that you've been seeing around town would be reflected here. It would come in a future assessment year.
There's nobody in the room to yell at about that multi-res. So I won't yell, but that stinks.
Yes. All right. The business property tax credit. So this was an interesting curveball that we received here recently. There was a change where, while back up, prior to this past legislative session, commercial properties could opt into a business property tax credit, which would allow the first $150,000 of their valuation to be taxed at the residential rate. It was then reflected for them as a credit, and the state would provide a backfill credit to the city that made us hold for that. Now, there has been a change made where it's actually changing the valuation. So the first $150,000 of their valuation has now been moved to the residential category. It's no longer a credit. It's just an upfront change to the structure. So we already had, in the city, about 80% of commercial properties participating in this tax credit. So this change puts about 20% of those properties into the pool, which, if you look there, I have the breakdown for you. It adds about 724 new properties, which are now obviously eligible for this. Again, we do receive a backfill for this. We'll continue to, we're told. For us, that represents about $1.7 million across all funds that we have. And then this is one where the budget that is before you, we have programmed in a little bit of a decrease from the $1.7 million. We feel like it's prudent based on previous actions that we start to reduce our reliance on these funds and now that it's tied to the actual property tax structure change. So hopefully, that explains a little bit of what you're about to see on our taxable valuation slide, which looks a lot different than normal. But again, we'll start with the good news first, which is the top right. So pretty strong tax-based growth for us, so 2.5%. Again, we need 2% usually, just to make our budget continue to be balanced. So this was great to see for us. Again, you're seeing that reduction in the multi-res, down 100%, but up in residential. And then you're also seeing a portion of that commercial, where it looks like it's down 4.17%. There is a portion of that, again, all of the first 150 of all of those properties is now being reflected in the residential category. So this has really kind of shook things up for us in the finance department. We have been working closely with the Department of Management over the last two weeks. They're quickly working to put calculators together. This is the information that we have right now. If any of that changes, we'll be sure to update you.
Does this include, this is the straight valuation? It does not include after TIFs or URTE? This is the valuation of the properties?
No, this is the taxable valuation, so this is what we receive taxes on. So this would already incorporate all of those. We would have already accounted for the exemptions.
Thank you.
All right. So moving in to the general fund and the trust and agency fund. The general fund for FY '24 and the trust and agency fund are both balanced. You'll see there that in our system, we're showing about a $300,000 deficit in the general fund and about a $240,000 surplus in the trust and agency fund. Again, that's in our accounting system. But overall, we're considering both of those balanced. The primary reason for the general fund is we apply such a conservative budgeting technique to that particular area. One example of that is we budget 100% of salaries. We know we're going to have turnover. We know we're going to have vacancies. Many cities would account for that in their budget. They would say, okay, I'm only going to budget 95% of salaries. We do not do that, have never done that, and don't recommend to. So overall, nothing on these two slides concerned me. These are great budgets that are before you. So when you look at the general fund, the main takeaway from this slide is you always want the two kind of orange slices to be in alignment. So the revenues from taxes, that's the orange on the left. And then the expenditures that are allocated to salaries and benefits is the orange on the right. You never want that pie on the right to get larger than the tax dollars that you have coming in. So we actually have a little bit larger of a margin than what we normally do there. So about 80% of our general fund revenue coming from taxes, and then about 76% of our budget allocated to salaries and benefits. So a really good, clean margin for us there. We then like to look at the general fund with trust and agency because these two work so closely as of here. We have a really similar split here. So our tax revenue in is 86%, and then our salaries and benefits allocation is 79%. So we keep a similar spread there. And then lastly, we know that one of the city council's primary goals is to continue to invest in our public safety area and particularly within our personnel area. This slide just shows our public safety departments, so police and fire together, how they're allocated. So when you look at them together, 69% of the police and fire budgets come directly from the general fund. That's how they are supported. A 30% from trust and agency, and then 1% from the special public safety fund. I think it's important to also add that this slide is just, again, looking at how they're allocated. When you look at how they changed over the prior year, again, we don't have final agreements with either union right now. We only have proposed agreements. But with those proposed agreements, public safety would be up about 4.5% over the prior year. So a definite increased investment in that service area. Okay. And then lastly, here, on the general fund and trust and agency fund, salaries and benefits up 3.65%. The majority of that, again, is attributed to those GWIs that we have programmed in. The other primary change for us is the way that we're accounting for community and economic development salaries. In the past, we have attempted to budget them from multiple different grant funding sources. It became quite a challenge for us because when it comes to actually realizing those, they're based on hours spent on projects. So we proposed to kind of simplify that this year, and we fully loaded all of their, or most of their salaries, into the general fund. And then there are transfers coming in to cover the cost. So again, when I mentioned earlier that our costs might be a little inflated, so are the revenues. So that's a net neutral change. It's just making the general fund look a little bit higher than normal there. Supplies up 4.28%. That seems like a big number, but the dollar amount there is fairly small. Not worried about that. Equipment, same thing, very, very small increase. Allocated costs up 6.44%. This is primarily due to the risk allocation and all of our insurance policies. So as our insurance policies go up, we have to allocate that out across all funds. And the general fund is a large portion of that. So total general fund and trust and agency budgets together up 3.99%. And Mayor, I think you had a few comments on general fund.
We'll take a quick break here in a second for a restroom and a couple of those kind of waves. So just notes I wrote that, and at first, again, I know you guys are wanting to thank, but thank the staff. You did that, recognize them, but thank everybody that participated in this. So just takeaways or highlights, stable, good financial position. We heard that in the audit. We hear that from our rating agencies. We heard that again. We continue to have a stable, good financial position. We're mission-focused. We focus on our operational pillars. Everybody knows that. And that's everything we do. A balanced budget. We focus on the council goals and the core competencies. We have good fund balance, which really means a big thing. Again, not sexy, but it means people that have outside eyes that look on what we're doing. We take seriously about what we're going to do in the future. The budget focuses on public safety. We have a pretty strong tax base. Audit briefings were good. And so my takeaway is we should be proud of this budget presentation, our financial situation. And again, thanks to the staff for the work. Any comment before a break? All right. I have 4:30, 6:00 on the clock. 4:45, back at the table. Again, thank you for your attendance. Thank you for paying attention. Thank you, Ms. Merritt and staff. Carry on.
All right. We're coming down the home front here for today. What we have left is the hotel motel tax fund and then some of the enterprise funds that we would consider major. So the hotel motel tax fund, you may recall, as we entered the pandemic, this was a fund we were incredibly worried about just because it's tied to tourism and that element in our community. We did process, the council at the time approved a budget amendment that was very significant within that fund in FY '21. We maintained that same reduction in '22. We programmed a little bit back in '23 and kind of the same for '24. As this fund continues to do well, which right now it is, the current estimates show that we're trending right in line with the $2.5 million budget. We would likely be bringing back a recommendation to start programming these funds back in. One of the primary areas that we did the budget reduction in was the River Center. So that would probably be our first cut, is to restore that back to prior levels. But again, that'll be more, I would say, of a third quarter, late-third quarter conversation once we see what the second quarter does. There's a lag with these payments, so we just received the first quarter. Yeah. Yeah, so we've just now received that was through September. So there's enough of a lag there that we're not fully comfortable to make that decision at this point.
With the Capitol Theater coming online, and I don't know exactly what they intend to use it for, will that be any competition for the River Center Adler? Particularly the Adler? Do we know?
I know a little bit, a very little bit, but I don't think so because I think the scale is very different.
It's smaller.
The plan is to have a private company that does this for a living, not a developer that, you know, Chris doesn't know. That's not what he does. That's his... And so they would be booking acts and things like that.
Oh, okay.
I don't think, it's a very different size.
Yeah, I was talking to a promoter about this last week and asked that same question. And he views it as complimentary and a good thing.
Good. Good. It's exciting to have both.
All right. The next slide, this is just a history of the hotel motel tax revenue. Again, this is more just for information only. It illustrates that point, that things are starting to improve within that fund again, and a return to prior levels. All right. The next block here, these are our enterprise funds. Again, these are our business-type funds. We currently have 11 of them. And the measurement goal is... We currently have 11 of them, and the measurement goal is different than our governmental funds. So our measurement goal in our enterprise funds is really about cost recovery. It's not about profit. So we want to make sure that the fees that we're assessing are covering our costs and any long-term cash needs that we have, but it's not necessarily about trying to make money. So just a little bit of a different approach there than the private sector, even though they're called business type units. The block at the bottom, I would say, is really the most important part of the slide. This budget continues these modest and consistent revenue escalators within these funds. We've heard the council say over a number of years, we want these slow and steady increases. We don't want to have to drop a 12% increase on our residents for any one thing. So this does continue that approach. The first one here is the sewer fund. You'll recall last, well, about a year and a half ago at this point, we did have PFM dust off our sewer rate study and revisit that and look at our rates. They recommended 5% annual increases for a three-year period. So that was FY23 through FY25. And then our focus in this fund is really on increasing our available cash to address those long-term capital needs that we have within our sewer system, but also at the water pollution control plant. So the way the city funds our portion or our contribution to water pollution control plant is directly through the sewer fund. That's the connection there. So again, that's another group that we look at often as a pair.
And again, that 5% is less than what it was prior years, correct?
Correct, it was 7%.
Miss Lee. You got to fill your pools. Have we worked on the issue about water use related to sewer bills for things like gardens and filling your pools and things getting included in the sewer even though it doesn't go into the sewer?
Yeah, this comes up from time to time. I know that Odine, Jim Odine, our assistant finance director, has a memo on this. We can look at that again and look at distributing that to the council.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because we've talked about it, but I was just wondering what the status is.
Yep, okay, we'll follow up on that. All right, so again, the sewer and the water, the sewer fund and the water pollution control plant fund are closely tied together. The Joint Youth Cities developed a new 2080 agreement several years ago. This is a partnership between the city, City of Davenport, Bettendorf, Panorama Park, and Riverdale. That's the shared group there. And then again, this new agreement was approved by the council in 2020. It's carried on. It seems to be working fine at this point. We do not have final contribution rates set for FY24. The Joint Youth Cities Board will vote on that at the February meeting. So there may be just some small budget changes there, just once we program it the correct revenue amount once we have it, but not anticipated to be anything significant. All right, our sewer fund cash, this was covered in your '22 chart. Again, you can see that even as, even as recent as 2016 and 2017, we had very, very minimal cash within that fund, which is within kind of that five to six-year window for us. We've covered a lot of ground in the last five years, which is how it was set up. That's how it was supposed to be working. Again, we had engaged our financial advisor to very carefully plan out this fund's future just because it was so bleak. The important thing here is although it looks like we have a very significant amount of cash there, it's still just less than one year of total operating cost. And when you have a critical asset in kind of our control, like the water pollution control plant, that is a good amount of reserves to have. We do expect that to continue to grow modestly over the next couple of years, and then this is one of those funds where we would start looking to use some cash on hand to avoid issuing additional sewer debt that creates these burdens long-term. So this is one of the funds where you could start to see those recommendations come forward.
Yes, in those years, just historic background, when it was negative, how did we fund what we had to do? Couldn't just not do stuff. Where did that money come from?
We had very high rate increases that were being charged to our residents.
We did a, we did a Big 12.
Yeah.
Because we didn't, yeah, it was, killed them, so.
Are we doing any public outreach regarding why the sewer funds and the stormwater funds and all those things are so important? Because they're, you know, you get a lot of complaints. Just wondering if we're doing it.
So we don't have any specific communication around that. We are very transparent, and I know I go to many of your ward meetings and talk about the source and use of those funds. I think a lot of residents don't understand the difference between their property tax and ultimately the fees for service, but our experience is when you try to explain that, it actually encourages more of a negative reaction, especially online, which is the best way. And most people don't read their newsletter that you get in your quarterly sewer bill.
Which is good, by the way.
So we've, we've used the methods available to us, and at least in my experience, I find the most meaningful conversations actually happen at your ward meetings.
All right, so our rate changes, to Alderman Jobin's point, we're in our second year in FY24 of the 5% that have already been approved by the city council. So the city council did approve an ordinance that covered three years, FY23, '24, and '25. Those rate increases are there. FY26 is highlighted in blue. The '26 column assumes a 5% increase. That is simply an assumption. We would recommend that once we get into '24 and '25, we reengage our partners and look at what we actually need to sustain the, the operational expenses that we have and the long-term capital plans that have been created, and then we'll come back with another three-year recommendation at that time.
Just to emphasize what Alderman Jobin said, this is a reduction from what it used to be.
The no-fault sewer reimbursement program, we always like to provide just a brief update on this. This program was created back in June, July of 2013, following some very significant rain events that had occurred here. You'll see the history there. So the first time was in FY2015. The rate at that time was $2 a quarter to support this program. We're down to 50 cents a quarter, and that has been adequate to cover the claims that we have. You may recall, as Corey mentioned earlier, this is a program where we were actually able to increase the claim reimbursement amount this year. So that was something great that the city council did. It was previously 7,500. We were able to increase it to 9,000. And you can see for FY22, we had about 10 claims with the average cost of that claim being around $5,000, and we still have an adequate program balance there to handle that. So this program has been great. The people who need it are very, very thankful for it and really has become a best practice that other communities look at. The solid waste fund, this again is, is some information for you. We've continued to grow that cash balance. Right now, it's at about 2.5, which is about 39% of our operating expenses within that fund, which is adequate for the size of the fund overall. We do have an update for you here that's, again, a little bit different than our prior year. In 2022, we underwent a route study, and that did have some operational changes that I know Nicole had presented to you at the time. And it really looked at balancing workload, just to eliminate some overtime costs that we were experiencing within the fund. We are proposing in this budget to increase staffing levels by one packer driver loader. Again, this is a fund that is a business unit, so its revenues directly support the expenses within the fund. They cannot be used for any other purpose. So the purpose of this new packer driver loader would be to really assist with the increasing demand that we're experiencing with environmental cleanups, bulky waste, and some of those special programs that Courtney mentioned as part of the community survey that we're certainly recognized for. We want to be able to continue to provide them, but it would certainly be helpful to have a little bit additional staff to, to balance that out. Even with that increase in personnel, the surplus that's before you, the anticipated surplus is about $180,000. This one, again, as long as we continue to have these modest surpluses, this is another one where we would recommend that perhaps we start to treat it similar to the clean water fund, where we build up quite a bit of cash in there, and then we draw it down for, let's say, a truck purchase. And then we can eliminate the need to bond for $780,000, $80,000 through our e-bond program. So those are the types of things that we're going to be looking at, and this is one area that you can expect to see that in the future.
Are we doing anything about the challenge of collection downtown, collection at larger rentals?
I would ask Nicole that.
So I would say that's really a partnership between Rich, Nicole, Alderman McGinnis, or the ward alderman in the case. Most of the time, those are commercial enterprises. They're not city pickups. And so balancing the fact that, you know, there's one that the mayor sees out his window all the time, that is a nuisance, and it goes through the nuisance abatement process. So we just need a good partnership with the property owners and their management teams. And Rich spends a ton of time on that specific issue.
The, in fact, this year, the downtown partnership has been working with the city and with the property owners on more efficient ways to collect, perhaps together. Each alley is different.
Oh, yeah.
And so, and it is a commercial. It's not the city going and picking it up. So each alley is sort of different, and so they're actually working. We didn't feel like saying, you need to do it this way, because the people who live there kind of can figure out what they need to do probably. So that, that's been a topic of conversation this year. There were some really good, mostly great businesses and some outliers, and so.
We certainly know.
Yeah. So it's kind of bringing them into, you know, and if the city has to, and believe the city is looking at that all the time. But that is actually a conversation that's going on in downtown. I don't know about, you know, every apartment complex, of course, is different, so that is happening.
Good, thank you.
All right, so within this fund, we do propose another 3% increase in the fees. You can see there on the chart that for FY24, the actual result of that would be anywhere from a 43 cent increase to a 66 cent increase over each quarter. So again, trying to carry on the direction of the council of these smaller increases that allow us to continue to fund our operations. A clean water fund, again, as I mentioned, this fund has a little bit different approach than some of the others when it comes to its cash balance. Historically, what we have attempted to do here is build up cash, and then a strategic project is selected, and then we'll draw it down and spend it on that project. That's working out well. So this is a cash growth year for us. So '22 and '23 will be about recovering, and then we would likely be looking to draw down some of these funds for another project in '24, '25. Same thing when it comes to fees within the clean water fund. We're recommending a 3% annual increase, which has been similar to all of the prior And then, as we talked about as part of the work plan, there are two funds that need a little extra diligence and a little TLC here over the next fiscal year. Those are the parking fund and the Rivers Edge fund. Both of those, again, are at those inflection points where we really need to start looking more deeply at them and figuring out what the long-term sustainability strategy is. The parking fund, the '24 budget includes a proposed deficit of about $30,000. We are experiencing a revenue reduction within that fund. So the staff team is already on that, working together to try to look at what's going on, come up with some recommendations, and hopefully come back to you in the near term if there are any changes that need to be made. Rivers Edge fund is a little bit larger or significantly larger. So '24, the proposed deficit is 303,000, and this already includes a subsidized transfer of $225,000 from both the general fund and hotel motel. So this one has gotten to that point where we actually need to look at it. The staff team on that has already been assembled. We'll be looking at that deeply and then coming back with a recommendation probably at the end of Q1 or the beginning of Q2.
So it's, so the Rivers Edge fund really is a deficit of over half a million because of the transfers covering. Thank you. Just making sure I was tracking.
Yep.
When do you think you'll have some kind of recommendations made?
I would say within the next couple of months, probably. And then our last fund of the day is the transit fund. We're going to end on a really positive note here. So there were some troublesome years with the transit fund that started really prior to 2017, but in FY2017, that is when our rating agencies said, we really don't like what you all are doing with this negative cash, where you're allowing some of these larger funds to sit in these negative cash positions. You need to start doing something about that. So that's why '15 and '16 and that subsidy line at the bottom have the asterisk. We started subsidizing in '17. You can see that that subsidy grew in '18, up to half a million, was over $400,000 in '19. And then in FY20, we started to receive higher grants than what was expected. Initially, those were tied to some CARES Act pandemic funding that we were receiving, but that, that has held really into '22 and even into our current year, '23, and our projected grant allocation for '24. So we've really eliminated the need for those large general fund subsidies, which has been a really, really positive for both the general fund and the transit fund to start to have its own cash. This is just.
A question, what are the new buses, that the electric buses that will be coming online? When will we notice, like, you know, you don't have as much gas expense and stuff like that. When will we notice or start seeing that? And then can we turn that into, you know, like, we all, or I get called, or, you know, as a number of us get emails on, you know, increased hour, hours of operation, because some people do use this to get to work or to medical, you know, appointments or something. But when, when would we start noticing that savings?
Yeah, that's something that I would want to look at with Nicole, and then we could include that in the follow-up memo. I don't have that directly on hand, but we'll get something back to you on what we're perhaps expecting.
And I would just add, operationally, we, we hear that, and I know Nicole and Marla hear it a lot. The data doesn't match, though, so there's a little chicken and egg that comes with it of, well, if you had service, we would ride it more. Well, we did years and years of analytics, and that's, it's not true. And so there's, I think, a sweet spot that the council has to decide on its cost per rider and what that investment level is. And Nicole and her team have done a really great job on the data side of that, but we hear it. I'm sure all of you hear it of, you know, we need Sunday service. We tried Sunday service. It was, it was very ineffective, both financially and operationally.
Yep, no, I appreciate that, and, and you guys have done a great job on it, and like I said, just, just trying to see where we can gain to where we could, you know, help also. So thank you very much.
All right, and then the slide on this screen here is just, just to show you the difference in the expenses that we have within this fund and then that higher revenue there. So you can see that we're exceeding that, which is allowing us to reinvest that back in to some capital, like some bus shelters, those types of things that otherwise have been challenging to complete.
Can I have a quick question on shelters? Do we collect garbage as bus shelters? Do we have?
If you have a specific complaint, don't forget to tell us. All right, and then just to summarize, back to our budget development goals, they're really focused on. They're really focused on alignment, compliance, and then maintaining that 1678 tax rate and continuing to maintain or exceed our residents' current service level. Those were the three things that we feel like are really important as we try to resource all of the council's goals. And that concludes the operating budget, Your Honor.
So just tell them what's next, and then I'll ask if there's any other follow-up questions.
Okay, we can hit the agenda here for next, or for this coming Saturday, actually. So we'll go over the capital introduction and then our capital funds, so road use tax, local sales tax, and debt service. And then we'll turn it over to Clay to go through the current infrastructure workload for '23 and then the proposed CIP program for '24.
Thank you very much. So questions about the operating, I'd ask you if it's capital, the hold until Saturday, so, Mr. Gribb.
Well, you know, very good. This, this seems very reminiscent of the last two budgets, which is, which is good. We're holding, holding steady and doing good things. Probably the most encouraging thing that I heard in this presentation was that we're getting to the point that we've got the financial flexibility to deal with issues when they come up, and we have the ability to resource capital needs without bonding, which we haven't had in the past. Is that right? That is super important with the interest rates going up. And so one big question I have, and perhaps you will address it next week, is how do the interest rates hikes going up affect our ability to borrow in the capital budget? Because over the last few years, it seems like we've been refinancing a lot of debt because of historical interest rates, and it's been fun to see how much money that we're saving. But now we're borrowing at a higher rate, so if it's not already a part of the compensation, we have to use that in the future.
Ms. Lee?
I've, I've got a couple, going through the book. One is, I'm really excited that we're looking for a new hazmat response vehicle, and I really like to encourage going out and getting some grants. We need it now. So, yeah, getting grants or partnerships or whatever, because we're regional. So, let's get that as soon as possible, particularly if this train merger goes through. I want to say yay on the special forfeitures and seizures that's gone down to zero. Anyway, I'm glad to see that, oh, that it's gone down to zero. Yeah, a couple of questions, one on the library. I see that the library grants are going from $78,000 to zero. Is there a reason for that?
The library grants are not budgeted. So I think what you're looking at is they would only be reflected in the actuals. So you would see actuals for FY '22 and '21, and then zeros for FY '23 and '24. Those are usually special. As they come in, they're coded, and then we increase the budget authority. So that's part of your budget amendment each year.
Excellent, okay. A little bit about parks. I, I see on page 204 that we need four FTEs. I think we probably need a lot more than that, but is that budgeted? Are we going to get some more FTEs for parks?
So our commitment to you as part of Main Street Landing was that we would evaluate that. As you've heard, the General Fund is very tight. And so four FTEs is not built in. We will continue to work with Chad on the service delivery model, but we need growth in revenue or reduction in expense to achieve that.
But we need it. Okay, let's see. Okay, for what's needed, okay. Those are my big que, oh, one of the questions about the camera plan. Are those for traffic cameras or for neighborhood cameras, or both?
Are you referencing the item in the CIP?
Well, but, but there was a reference under the.
Business plan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Those are the neighborhood cameras.
Oh, okay.
Intersections with LPRs is what they are.
They're not citation purpose-based.
Yeah, okay.
They're for public safety. That program's probably, Your Honor, probably five, six years we've been working on it now.
Probably.
Like what you've got at Washington.
Yeah, a couple more spots.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. I think we need those two, okay. One other question, just establish the stormwater management plan. That's one of the goals. Where are we with that?
It's in process with the Corps. We're meeting with them monthly.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Good. When do we think we'll have it?
It's a while, it's a while yet.
It is a big project, but it's really important. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Doug? I just want to say thank you. You know, this presentation and the budget book is very detailed. There's a lot of information there, and you know, I can remember my first budget meeting I came to was three pages. Wasn't very detailed. You really didn't know what was going on. If you look at everything in here, it's fairly easy to follow and pretty basic. And I'm glad, you know, everything looks good this year, so thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
And again, the organization.
Okay, I'll just, I, I think we should be pretty proud of this budget. I mean, yes, there's things we always need to work on and adjustments need to be made, and we do that all the time anyway. And there's some things that are particular to each, you know, whether it's the council person or staff that we need to adjust when things come up. But as overall, you heard me speak already, and I agree with Alderman. I remember the days where some of those graphs, and you guys saw them tonight, that were under there. We're way above. Again, things that need to adjust, but, you know, we'll hear next week some good things on capital and record funding for the things that are a priority like streets and things like that. But the operating budget's pretty solid, and it's a kudo to this council and the staff that, that this budget is, is stable and in a great financial position. So, thank you very much. Have a nice day.